Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have checked with the town clerk and we do have a quorum present. So with the quorum being present, I now declare the town of Millville's special town meeting of Monday, November 4th, 2019 to order at 7:00 PM. As a reminder, if there are any visitors or non-registered voters, please move somewhere to the front row with your observer tag. And at this time, I ask everybody to stand for the pledge allegiance and for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor our civil servants and military personnel who have dedicated their lives protecting our safety, our freedom, and our democracy. Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, I would like to take a moment and recognize State Representative Mike Soder, who's here tonight. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to please take a moment and silence your cellphones or mobile devices so that there are no interruptions during this evening's meeting. I would also like to ensure that everyone present as a registered voter has in fact checked in at the back table and that they have in their possession a pink card. We're going to be using these to vote tonight, so if you have not checked in or you do not have a pink card and you're a registered voter, please go to the table. And I would also like to go over some procedural rules that will be part of tonight's meeting. As a reminder, everyone in the room tonight is expected to be respectful of the meeting and everyone in attendance. You do not have to agree with everyone here, but you must be respectful. As the moderator, anyone not conducting him or herself in a respectful manner would be asked to leave. Going forward, I will read an article and following that, someone will make a motion to move the article. There'll be a five-minute time limit for the person who moves the article to present or describe it if they so choose. Any resident wishing to speak for or against an article may come down to one of the microphones and form a line. When recognized by the moderator to speak, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and then you'll be given up to three minutes to talk. At the conclusion of three minutes, I will inform you that your time is over. After every resident who wishes to speak has a turn, people may speak again and have another up to three minutes. All questions and discussions should be directed towards the moderator. If appropriate, I will then in turn ask someone on the stage or in the audience to respond or answer a question if appropriate. Remember to never address a previous speaker or a town official directly. Discussion and questions must be relevant to the motion that we are voting on. It is the moderator's job to ensure that rule is followed, so I will interrupt or limit discussion if I feel a comment or discussion is not relevant to the scope of the article under consideration. Throughout the evening, there may be instances when non-residents or non-voters are asked to speak. Examples could be, but are not limited to, town council, the town's accountant, town administrator, police chief, MEMA director, superintendent, town planner, librarian, et cetera. If a question arises in which this meeting can benefit from the expertise of such a person, provided there are no objections, I will permit them to address the voters within the previously described time frames. If objections are raised, it will be at my discretion as to permit the non-resident or non-voter to speak out. I am elected to run this meeting and provide as much relevant information to the voters present as possible so that you can make the most informed vote possible, and at times that may include allowing insight from residents or non-voters. I would like to take a minute to talk about the procedures of voting tonight, for the record. General law, Chapter 39, Section 15 states, "If a two-thirds, four-fifths, or nine-tenths vote of a town meeting is required by statute, the count shall be taken and the vote shall be recorded in the records by the clerk, provided however that a town may decide by bylaw or vote not to take account and record the vote if a two-thirds vote of a town meeting is required by statute." Having said that, the town of Millville has adopted a bylaw specific to this, Chapter 30, Section 30-3K, which states the moderator may conduct all votes requiring two-thirds majority by statute in the same manner in which the moderator conducts the votes when a majority vote is required. What does that mean? These sections of the law and bylaw will be important tonight. Since we have several votes that will call for a two-thirds vote to pass, I will be asking you at those times to raise the colored card that you were given at check-in rather than say the words "aye" or "nay." A visual of raised cards will be easier to declare than a voice vote on issues that require two-thirds to pass. We will not need the counters to go around and count your raised cards unless I feel the vote is too close to call as a pass or a fail. I will re-explain this as we get to the articles that it pertains to, but I just wanted to explain the basis for the method of voting tonight while we're going over these procedural items rather than on each applicable article. At this time, I would like to introduce everyone on the stage, so starting with the board of selectmen. Andrew, do you want to introduce yourself?
Andrew Alward, Board of Selectmen.
Kevin Saret.
Thomas Hool.
Jennifer Day Wing.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
Brian Riley, Town Council.
Ken Tubman, Finance Committee.
Gary Gill.
Adrian, Adrian Paddett.
Brian Pacico, Finance Committee.
Aubrey Bono.
Diane Lockwood, Town Clerk.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we can begin with our business. First motion of order is, I'm going to ask everybody to take up the handout that looks like this. This was a handout that was presented at the Finance Committee's public hearing, and I'm going to ask at this time that the Finance Committee briefly walk us through this within a five-minute timeframe.
Thanks, Jackie. So this handout that everyone has, it's intended to summarize both our balances and our stabilization accounts and the articles that are proposed tonight via the warrant that would impact our stabilization accounts. So if you look at the top row, the beginning balance, you'll see that Millville has three stabilization accounts. We have a general stabilization account, a capital stabilization account, and a public safety stabilization account. So the beginning balances of those three accounts are listed in the top row with a total on the right-hand side. Then underneath those balances, you will see all of the article numbers which correspond to the article numbers in your warrant, as well as dollar figures that are associated with each warrant article. And under each stabilization account is listed where the proposed funding is to come. So for example, Article 1, unpaid invoices, $8,000, is to come from general stabilization. Article 2, $30,400, is to come from general stabilization. Article 3, police generator, $11,000, is to come from capital stabilization. Article 4, senior center generator, $17,000, is to come from capital stabilization. Article 5, police cruiser, $48,000, is to come from public safety stabilization. Article 6, feasibility study for water, $50,000, is to come from general stabilization. Article 8, deprader street, $183,000, is to come from general stabilization. And Article 12, amend library budget, $29,500, is to come from general stabilization. In the line underneath those articles, you'll see an ending balance. So this is if everything were to pass, what the ending balances in our stabilization accounts would be. And then underneath that, you'll see a percentage decrease. So to summarize, in total, to the extent all of these articles were to pass, we would be looking at a 38.8% decrease in our stabilization balances overall.
Thank you, Aubrey. At this time, if there are no objections, I'm going to ask the town administrator to comment briefly on the status of our free cash.
Yes, so free cash is being worked on. We talked about that at the public hearing. You'll see there's no town accountant here in this evening. He's actually working on free cash and is comfortable enough at this stage to say that the free cash balance to expect is somewhere on the order of $600,000, but we don't know the exact amount yet, and it has not been submitted to the state for certification.
So therefore, in summary, that is not an available option to spend from tonight.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, now that we understand that brief financial overview, I'm going to begin with the reading of the articles. Article 1 is unpaid invoices from prior fiscal year to see if the town will vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 64, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money necessary for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from prior fiscal years or take any action relative thereto.
I move that the town vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 64, to raise and appropriate $8,961.68 for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from the prior fiscal year 2019 as follows. $2,817.64 to establish for Board of Health, Landfill, Engineering, and Monitoring. $6,144.04 to tech for Highway Department Stormwater Management.
So there's a motion made by Andrew Alward. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Thomas Hool. Is there any discussion about this? Seeing that I will call for the vote, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of passing the article, the motion is read, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, say "nay." I declare it unanimous. Article 2, fund capital item, police station HVAC system, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from the general stabilization fund the amount of $30,400 to replenish the reserve fund for police department building HVAC system replacement or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $30,400 from the general stabilization fund to the reserve fund appropriations for fiscal year 2020 for replacement of the police station HVAC system.
So there's a motion made by Aubrey Bono. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian Pacico. Is there any further discussion on this? Yes, sir, come on down to the microphone, please. Aubrey, do you need the motion? Would you like an opportunity to discuss this?
I guess I will just explain it at a high level quickly for the benefit of the voters. A couple of months ago, an issue got brought to our attention by Chief Landry and Town Administrator Peter Caruso that there was a problem with the HVAC system and the ventilation in the police station, such that there were multiple problems, the first being that the air conditioner was not working, but the more important issue being that the ventilation in the police station was causing a health hazard to the professionals that work in the police station. So because the ventilation was causing an air quality control issue, the concern was when it came time for the heat to come on, which is right about now, there would be a serious issue with those that were working in the police station. So the request was made to appropriate $30,400 from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to address this problem. As a Finance Committee, we talked in length as to whether or not this particular issue could wait for this special town meeting. Because of the health and safety concern that was presented to us, we did decide unanimously to make the $30,400 appropriation from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund to fund this particular capital item. So I've been told that the repair has been completed and that everything is working great in the police station now. So in essence, this has already been paid for, but what this article does is it allocates that $30,400 back into the Finance Committee Reserve Fund so that if we have any other emergencies that come up throughout the year, the Finance Committee is able to address those issues if it's unforeseen and extraordinary and allocate those funds to the extent that we have the monies available. The effect of not passing this article means that if something like that came up, a special town meeting would be required and we would be asking voters to come out and vote for an appropriation from stabilization or free cash or another resource.
Thank you.
It's my understanding we're getting rid of the police station.
Sir, could you just state your name and your address, please?
David Lemanic, 102 Central Street.
Thank you.
Forty-five-year resident.
That's right.
Aren't we getting rid of the police station? Honestly.
So are we getting rid of the police station?
Yes, that's my question.
I'm going to defer that to the Board of Selectmen. Would the Board of Selectmen like to comment on that?
There's been no discussion to that.
No discussions at all?
The answer is there's been no discussion, sir.
Changing the library to the police station?
There has been no discussion by the Board of Selectmen.
That's just a rumor?
It's exactly.
Just a rumor?
At least that's how I know of it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who would like a question?
Rich Perhelo, 39 Grove Street. Just a quick question. A curiosity, why wouldn't that have come out of the capital stabilization versus the general stabilization?
Thank you. I'm going to ask the Finance Committee to answer that, please.
There's no particular reasoning for that. It could have come out of, it meets the requirements of either general stabilization or capital stabilization, so that was just the preference based on the account balances that were available.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing that I'm going to call for a vote. Because this article does require two-thirds, I'm going to ask us that we vote with our pink cards. So anybody in favor of passing the article and moving $30,400 from the stabilization fund to replenish the reserve fund for the police department building HVAC system, please raise your pink card. Thank you. Anybody opposed, please raise your pink card. It is not unanimous, but it certainly is a two-thirds, so it is passed. Article 3, fund capital item, police station generator, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from the capital stabilization fund the amount of $11,000 to replace the police department building generator or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $11,000 from the capital stabilization fund to fund the fiscal year 2020 proposed capital budget to replace the police department building generator.
With a motion made by Mr. Hool, is there a second?
One second, then.
Second by Kevin Saret. Mr. Hool, would you like to discuss this article?
Sure. Can everybody here?
Can you use the microphone? So Tim said talk into the microphone like you don't have one and you're projecting way back.
Okay. So I'm just going to give my brief rundown on it and then if the chief has anything to elaborate. Basically, the generator at the police station no longer is operable, it's no longer fixable, it's ancient, and it needs to be replaced. We need to be able to be up and running during an emergency event and in the loss of power, we cannot do that at this time. Chief, you have anything to add to that?
Well, we'll see if there are any voters that would like to discuss before we ask the non-residents.
Larry Pearson, 17 Grant Circle. Is the proposed new generator going to be diesel, propane, or solar?
Does the Board of Selectmen know the answer to that?
Yes, it's propane.
It's propane, thank you. Is there any other questions from the audience? Seeing that I'm going to call for the vote, again, because this is coming from the stabilization, we're going to use our pink cards. So all those in favor of appropriating $11,000 from the stabilization account to replace the police department building generator, please raise your card. All those opposed, please raise your card. I declare it unanimous. Article 4, fund capital item, senior center generator, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from the capital stabilization fund the amount of $17,000 to add a generator to the Millville Senior Center, which serves as one of the town's emergency centers, or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $17,000 from the capital stabilization fund to fund the fiscal year 2020 proposed capital budget to add a generator to the Millville Senior Center.
So there's been a motion made by Jen Wing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Thomas Hool. Jen, would you like to discuss this article?
In the past, we've been using the senior center with their kitchen and the capabilities that we have there that we don't necessarily have here at the elementary school. Provides a nice secondary location in the downtown area, so in case the power is out, we have somewhere to go. So this was proposed by our MEMA and our town administrator to use that money for a generator for that building for the emergency shelter.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this?
Hello, Jennifer Gale, 100 Berthalet Way. Two things that came up at the Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday. Firstly, there's $7,000 in the senior center budget for a generator already. Has that been allocated or what's the, how does that tie to this spend?
Okay, so that question, I would refer to the town accountant, because town accountant is not here. Peter, can you speak to that?
Actually, I cannot. We didn't look to allocate that money. We went straight to the capital stabilization fund here. And this would also serve as an emergency operations center in addition to a place for people to go.
Thank you.
My, it's okay, my second question is.
You're in the three minutes.
All right, thank you. My second question, is there an agreement to use the senior center as an emergency shelter, because that was also discussed, that that had not been done yet?
Thank you.
An agreement between?
An agreement, it was brought up at the public hearing, an agreement between the council on aging and the emergency management, the MEMA director.
It's a town building, so it can be used during the life of that. The senior center, when it was first built, could not be used for anything other than the senior center, but now that time has expired, so it can be used for other things. I would imagine that we have used it in the past, so there would be implied that it's been used as an emergency shelter twice or opened up during an emergency. So I think it's implied that their intent is to have that available.
Okay, and my last point is that we do have access to the school building to be used as an emergency shelter, and if there was a hurricane or something like that, obviously kids would not be in school. I can't imagine that the kitchen at the senior center is better than the kitchen at the school, considering the number of students that they serve here on a daily basis for lunch. So I don't think that we really need to support it, especially with the $7,000 that were already allocated. I think that an analysis of that money needs to be done first before we move forward with the spend, because I don't think Millville is in a position to be wasting $17,000 without an accurate accounting. I'm sorry about my cough.
Thank you. I'm going to let the Finance Committee speak and then we'll turn to you.
I just also want to let people know that there's a grant request in for this generator right now, and so the Finance Committee also thought it would be better to defer this to our annual town meeting after the grant request potentially is answered.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
Linda Vado, Hill Street, Millville. As far as the senior center goes, I thought there was only so much space to accommodate people.
They can't hear you, go to a safe and loud.
This is the on?
It is on.
Okay. I said, as long as they're using it for, oh my God, in case there's an emergency. There's only so many people that are allowed in the senior center because of the size of it. There's only two bathrooms, and I don't see the use of using that for an emergency for the town. The town is too big to use that place.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on the article? Seeing that I'm going to call for the vote. I'm sorry, Mrs. Bowen, come on down, I'm sorry.
I guess I do know.
Can you just state your name and address?
Yeah, Ellen Bowen, 98 Providence Street. And I do know that there is money in the account that the council on aging is holding. In fact, it was in the account when the building was put up, and the generator was never installed, but it's there. That's one comment. The other one is, I don't understand why we would want $17,000 for that generator when we just passed $11,000 for a generator for the police station, and they're about the same size. So I just want an explanation of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody, are there any objections to the town administrator speaking on this?
So the difference between the two generators, they're basically the same generator, the one for the police station, which is less expensive, is hooking up to existing transformers and electrical distribution. The one for the senior center requires special transformers and thus costs more for the installation. And separately, in terms of the $7,000, just to be clear, there may have been $7,000 allocated in a prior capital budget, but that money, I don't know where that is, frankly, there's nothing in the existing operating budget, so I don't know.
Thank you. Then Mrs. Bowen, is there anybody else who would like to speak before I permit Mrs. Bowen to speak a second time?
Just to clarify that, that amount of money was never allocated. It was always there, the $7,000. So that was never allocated or brought up for the taxpayers to pay. I just wonder what is happening with that and why $47,000? Perhaps the.
Seventeen thousand, not forty-seven, seventeen.
Okay, that's next year. All right. I would like, maybe the police chief might be able to respond to that.
Respond to what, Mrs. Bowen?
Why the difference in the cost.
The town administrator, just explain that. There's infrastructure that already exists at the police station that they're able to hook into, whereas it appears at the senior center, they would need to have new infrastructure built because it's not, they're not replacing, it would be in addition to.
Okay, thank you.
Your honor.
And then this place is still available to Millville for that purpose, and in the senior center, only taking ninety-seven people, that's the capacity up there. So I think we better think about this.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
Jan Dean Kibadish, 43 Central Street, Millville. I'm the chairperson for the council of aging, and I'm not here to argue, I'm just here to state facts. The senior center is open to the public, especially in an emergency, it is always open to the public. In fact, it would be open overnight if there's an emergency. We'll always take as many people as we can take, we'll always help as many people we can help. That's what we're all about. It happens to be a senior center, doesn't have to be old. If you lose light, you can come, we'll help you. We'll always, always be there for you. I just wanted to say that MEMA is all about getting a grant, and that will be through our police chief in the future. He will be handling that for getting money reimbursement. So for example, if we get, say, $10,000, $17,000, whatever it might be, for this generator system, because we have to start from scratch to get this generator system, because there's nothing there. So once it's in, we get reimbursed by this MEMA grant.
Just to be clear, we don't have.
We don't have the grant yet, absolutely not. This is being applied for, but this is, just to let you know that, this is not money we're going to be grabbing and spending just for the heck of it. This is for the public, this is for an emergency, and the police department is behind 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to let the chairperson of the Finance Committee.
I just wanted to just speak generally.
I just wanted to just speak generally to stabilization articles and replenishment and just the way the process works. So currently, you know, we have these balances in our stabilization accounts. Our stabilization accounts, for anyone who might not know, are like savings accounts for us. So when we take money from the savings account, we need to appropriate it back in, if that's even a possibility, at a future town meeting. So to the extent, for example, with the senior center generator, that we appropriate seventeen thousand dollars coming from our stabilization account, if a grant were to pass, that doesn't mean we automatically get to take that seventeen thousand dollars and put it back into our savings account. It goes into the general pool, and then at our year-end process, when we go through our budgeting process at year-end, it's going to be, you know, up for grabs. Whether that makes its way back into stabilization or not will be the decision of the town voters at the next town meeting. So to echo what Adrienne said earlier, the couple of reasons that the Finance Committee voted against this article, zero to five to recommend, was one, there is currently a grant in process, so we would prefer to see what happens with that grant. And secondly, that Millville has a functioning emergency center that it's been using for, for years, and is perfectly appropriate, and that's the school. And thirdly, it doesn't prevent the senior center from being used in the, in the event of emergency. It just takes into account that if we were in a situation where we had no power, the senior center would not be an option. The school would need to be the option. So it doesn't preclude, for example, this summer, I know it was very hot, the senior center was opened, it had AC, residents went to the senior center, and that can still happen. So this is really in case there was a loss of power, and the Finance Committee thought we should really wait and see what happens with that grant, rather than pull from the stabilization account.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Jen, before I let you speak again, is anybody else... Okay, go ahead.
I guess the, sorry, I'm a tall person. I guess the only other point that I wanted to make since Aubrey brought up stabilization and all these funds, because I am on the Capital Planning Committee, and we are working together, putting together a five-year plan in how we want to spend this money, and spend it in the best way possible for Millville. So anything that's taken away here means that we don't have the opportunity to really scrutinize the spend and look at it very closely, and see, is this something we should spend right this second, or something that we could maybe wait a little while for. And it's not that, you know, anyone on, you know, we're not saying not ever, we're just saying not now. Just give us the opportunity to kind of scrutinize that money and look at everything that we're spending, and put together a real plan for Millville, which we haven't had in quite a while. So I would just ask you to give us that opportunity with this extra seventeen thousand dollars.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on the article?
Paul Canale, 28 Fonzaway. I just had a question. I heard it mentioned, I don't know who mentioned it on the Board of Selectmen side, that there was seven thousand dollars, I thought I heard, that was put aside at some point for the generator, and then I heard someone else say that we didn't even know where that money was. So my question is, hey, was there or is there seven thousand dollars, and if there is or was, where is it?
Thank you. So at this time, because it has been discussed, I'm going to respond. I believe that we don't, I know, that we don't have a town accountant with us present tonight. There are people from the senior center who believe that there was some money when the building was built, and the funds were given for the building that were appropriated and set aside for that generator. Our town administrator, Peter, is not aware of those funds, nor is the Board of Selectmen aware of the funds or where they would exist right now.
So just to clarify, there is not a line item that, that is designated for that, so within our operating budget, that we approved back in May. I believe they have gift accounts, but there is no generator gift account. Correct me if I'm wrong, Pam.
Well, let's not speak to people directly. That would be a question for the town accountant, who is not here tonight.
Well, they know their budget, and they know their gift accounts. So what seems to me is that even though it may have been there when it was built, because it wasn't spent, it was probably rolled over within to free cash the next year, and then has been since used. Is that's the process of any monies that is not used in one year? That is what occurs.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that, I'm going to call for the vote. Because this vote, because these funds are coming from Capital Stabilization Fund, it requires a two-thirds vote, so we're going to use our pink cards. All those in favor to raise and appropriate seventeen thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund to fund the senior center generator, please raise your pink card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise... So it's not unanimous, but it is definitely clear that this motion did not pass. Article five, Fund Capital Item Police Cruiser. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund, the amount of no more than forty-eight thousand dollars to purchase a new replacement police cruiser, or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of thirty-eight thousand from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund to fund the fiscal year 2020 proposed capital budget to purchase a police department cruiser.
So there's been a motion made by Kevin Sorette, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars, which varies slightly from what is written. Is there a second? There's a second made by Jennifer Wang. Kevin, would you like to discuss the article?
When the police chief came to us and asked, he described the mileage of the vehicle. Chief Landry came to us when he made this request, and in doing so, he outlined the mileage of the vehicle, the age of the vehicle, and the projected amount of repairs that it might require to stay functioning in, in its fleet. And that's the basis upon this motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Larry Pearson, seventeen Granite Circle. Has there been any study or consideration made for leasing the police vehicle instead of purchasing it?
Thank you. Could I defer this to the Finance Committee?
So this, this particular item would fall under the Capital Planning Committee's venue, so they are, as far as I understand, working on, on a plan for all capital-related items, and I would presume that is lease as well as buy for police cruisers, but that's, that's my understanding.
Thank you. Jennifer, as chairperson of Capital, would you like to speak to this next?
Sure. So you'll see the Capital Planning Committee voted four to one on this. I was the one who opposed this. But we are working on a plan, so kind of the same, I would make in terms of leasing or buying, that is something that we would scrutinize and look at what makes the most sense for Millville, and what makes the most sense to, again, preserve our funds as much as we can by getting the most for Millville. So that is one of the options that we're investigating, looking at leasing and things like that. So we just haven't had the opportunity to do that yet, which is why I opposed this motion. But I was in the minority, that's what we very clear.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Jennifer Gill, Citizen.
Sure, go ahead.
So it's Jennifer Gill, Citizen. Well, actually, they are related to Capital Planning, too. So I guess one thing is, I've been speaking with Rep. Soder and Senator Fatman, and we're able to get things funded for us through earmarks. And if you look at what they've gotten in the past, there was a lot of public safety items that are available. So that's another reason why I thought it'd be best to defer this, because we could maybe get this without depleting any funds from Millville at all, which would be great for us. And again, I just felt a great sense of responsibility to the town that we wanted to put together a full plan. And again, the last thing I'll say is, I'm not saying not ever. I'm just saying not now. Just give us the chance to put together a plan. I think we really need to scrutinize everything here and say, what do we need right this second? So, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Adrian.
Just to address the other question about lease versus taking money out of the stabilization account. So a lease will come out of the operating budget that we put together every year versus if we just take the money out of stabilization, it's a capital item.
Thank you.
I think, don't mark my words, but I think the cost this year was around sixteen thousand dollars out of our operating budget for that lease to own that we already have.
Okay, thank you. There was sixteen, she believes...
Around.
Approximately sixteen thousand dollars came from the operating budget this year for the lease of a different police vehicle that we currently have. So the option of lease versus purchase, she was just commenting that it cost the operating budget this year sixteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, one hundred and sixty.
Thank you. Yes.
Michelle Mulby, nineteen Grove Street. Just a quick question. What's the emergency? And why not at town, annual town meeting?
Thank you. With the Board of Selectmen, who made the motion, Kevin, would you like to speak to that?
I mean, I, I can't speak directly to it, other than what Chief Landry came to us and, and presented to us. I mean, he, it's quite possible that he has a different perspective. I don't know. But I mean, my recommendation was based upon the information that he gave me, the, the condition of the vehicle, its age, and the projections on how much additional resources would be used to repair it and keep it operational.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions?
Could we have... Cindy Walsh, thirty-one Maureen Way. How many police cruisers do we have right now?
Thank you.
Can I have a second question as well after that one's answered?
Okay. Peter, Peter, would you like to?
Sure, we have four patrol cars. This one that we're talking of replacing has nearly a hundred thousand miles on it. It's almost eight years old. And it's a hundred thousand miles plus idle time. These things idle a full shift. The chief operates the four cars, so he rotates them. One operates each shift, eight hours a day. And so I asked him to put together a little plan should one of them break down and we're without a cruiser for an extended period of time. The solution, the simple solution would be to run the other three more often, and therefore they're generating more miles and more hours. And so it's just a question of, you know, these things are consumable. The funding for this is proposed to come out of the Public Safety Stabilization Fund, which has, which today, right now, this moment, has a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in it. And the money that goes into it each year is fifty percent of the ambulance receipts fund, and every year, historically, the town has generated eighty thousand dollars, or, excuse me, or thereabouts of ambulance receipts. So approximately forty thousand replenishes this safety stabilization fund, which presumably was set up for this type of purpose, as well as other vehicle and equipment needs.
Okay, so just to be clear, there's only one, one cruiser on the road at a time? We have four?
Occasionally, when there's two shifts, there could be two on, on the road at, at , at a shift, during a shift. Generally, one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mulally?
Brian Mulally, sixty-six Central Street. Reading this, it's coming out of the Public Safety Stabilization, correct?
That is correct.
That is what that budget is set up for, that account, to fund public safety items. Police car is a public safety item. That account can't be used for any other items, because fifty percent of that money is put in there. We have the money in there. I see why, I don't see why we're not updating our fleet and keeping it to today's standard to keep our public safety officials safe.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Thank you, Jennifer Gill. So just since Mr. Mulally brought up public safety and the other things, we've actually been asked for other things as well to evaluate in terms of spend. And I don't know that I've been able to put a careful eye and determine that this is the most important one. Also, I'd just like to point out that Peter just said that there's a hundred and ninety thousand versus the two hundred and forty-six that's on your sheets. So I think that's important to note as well. And lastly, in my research, there are cars on the road with this many miles on them, and not just the Millville one and other places as well.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Tim Foley, Maureen Way. Previously, I hadn't heard that there was monies available from the state in, to the representative or the senator. If we buy the cruiser, are we now excluded from that money, or could that money be reimbursed to us later to re, to put back into that account?
Right. So I believe what Mrs. Gill was talking about is just earmarks through the state budgets, that, you know, she and the Capital Committee had been reaching out to the state reps and, and looking to work a plan on that. So at this time, there's nothing earmarked.
No, I understand that. But if, if, in other words, if you buy the cruiser, are you now excluded from those earmarks, or could you get it and then reimburse us?
So I don't know that there's a state rep here to answer that question. I will let Jen speak to it, but...
Yep. So to the best of my knowledge, so you put in an earmark and you get it, or you don't. If we buy it, we don't get reimbursed for that. We would go to the next item on the list to get earmarked.
Which would be the next cruiser that the chief had pointed out we were going to need?
Not necessarily. He's asking me for other things, and like a safety equipment for police officers as well as firemen. So it may or may not be the next item.
Thank you. Thank you both. Is there any further discussion?
Kevin Sullivan, one eighty-six Main Street, Millville. So anyway, so per the Capital Planning, I guess my issue is, they're saying that they're, they've essentially reviewed requests, sorry, they're saying they've essentially reviewed requests for public safety items, and they're trying to review what's best. My whole thing is, at this time, the chief is requesting a car, because it is, as, you know, our public safety director with the Fire Department and Police Department right now, he's seeing that we need a car. Not trying to completely disagree with Capital Planning, no disrespect, but it's, this is what the money's for. I do feel like that, at the end of the day, our best interest is by having safe, reliable vehicles on the road for our police officers to get from point A to point B. In a town where we typically have one officer on at a time, if he was responding to a call, whether it be to a car stop, or a sub, burglary, sorry, burglary, or any other call, if a car that breaks down while he's in transport, puts our entire town at risk. To replace a car that is in much need that the chief's been asking for, I'm not quite sure what the, you know, negative discussion on this is. At this time, our entire fleet, none of it is that new, to where if we were to replace this car going forward, you know, obviously seeking assistance from the state for future cars would be a great plan. But as of right now, at this point in time, a car is needed, and for us not to be offering it, in the event that something's happened, or an officer's en route to a call and doesn't have access to get to that call, I think is a bigger problem and a bigger liability on the town.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mulley?
Yes.
Just for your information, this is his second request to replace this vehicle. The first request was denied at meeting. So this is not the first time he's asking to replace this vehicle, and it is overdue based upon his professional opinion.
Thank you.
Can I, Ms. Mulley?
Yes.
Also, our fleet has some newer vehicles in it, just so people are understanding. We have some very new vehicles, in fact. Our fleet, our fleet isn't as old as the gentleman implied. We do have some newer vehicles, and some quite new vehicles in our fleet currently.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the article? Seeing that, I'm going to call for the vote. We're going to use our pink card, because this is coming from a stabilization account, and it would need a two-thirds majority to pass. So if you are in favor of appropriating forty-eight thousand dollars from the Public Safety Stabil... I'm sorry, thirty-eight thousand, thank you. If you are in favor to raise and appropriate or transfer from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund, an amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars for the purchase of a capital item police cruiser, please raise your card. All those, thank you. If you are not in favor, please raise your card. I do not believe that is a two-thirds, so I'm going to declare the fact motion has failed. I do not believe that is a two-thirds, so I'm gonna declare the back motion has failed. Article six, feasibility study at Millville Elementary School Water System. To see if the town will vote to approve the sum of no more than fifty thousand dollars to be transferred from the General Stabilization Fund for the purpose of paying the cost of a feasibility study for water system supply alternatives for the Millville Elementary School, one twenty-two Barthollet Way, Millville, Mass. zero one five two nine, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. The study, said amount to be expended at the direction of the Board of Selectmen or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Madam Moderator, I move to strike this article at this time.
There's been a motion made to strike the article by Selectman Hool. Is there a second?
Seconded that motion.
Seconded by Kevin Sarek. Mr. Hool, would you like to discuss this?
I'd like to defer my response to the town administrator, please.
Is there any objection to the town administrator speaking to this article? Hearing none? The floor is yours.
Okay, so, we did have Congressman McGovern come into the school here to evaluate, help us evaluate and understand the water challenges here. And he connected us with the key funding agencies and service providers who get monies from the feds and pass them through to communities like ours when there's a need identified. And so, I met with the key person from Massachusetts, and I also met with their critical PhD scientist who met with me and the system operator that we use here at the school. And after spending several hours, their recommendation was, well, particularly the representative of the agency, the PhD guy, talking in great, great scientific language that I had trouble keeping up with, quite frankly, that thought that a fifty thousand dollar feasibility study is on the low side of what you really need to do on this. And to do it right, you really have to do practically a feasibility study to come up with the right feasibility study to evaluate your options. And based on what he understood in terms of the water quality, quantity here, he did not think that the, the issue was to find a different source. He thought that there might be some less expensive solutions for further treatment. So, at this point, it seemed best to continue to learn more about what the challenges really are, how to best deal with them. And so, it, it was my recommendation to the board that they withhold this, this article or pull this article at this point in time.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Yes.
Meg Boone, two-two-four Chestnut Hill Road. I, I apologize for my ignorance, but what is the impact of the water? What are we doing or not doing here at the elementary school because of the water issue?
If there are no objections, I will ask the town administrator to briefly address this. It's not really within the scope of the article that we're voting on right now. We're being asked if we would like to spend fifty thousand dollars to do a feasibility study.
Oh, I thought we were being asked whether or not we're dropping the article.
No, we're asking to strike the article, to not.
Right, so maybe we need to not strike the article if it's, there's a critical issue.
Right, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask if there are no objections for the town administrator to briefly describe the situation at, at the elementary school.
Okay, sure. So, the elementary school, back in November of two thousand eighteen, over, I think it was Thanksgiving weekend, exceeded certain parameters of parts per million regarding disinfection byproducts. And so, basically, what that means is that the system puts in chlorine to help knock down the level of iron and manganese. And put in too much chlorine for the amount of iron and manganese in the water supply at that particular point in time, exceeded the levels significantly, one time only. And since then, has been testing fine and under those levels. However, the way that Massachusetts DEP does their reporting and requirements of the town, they take a quarterly average, and the quarterly averages have yet to come below the thresholds that they need to for these chlorine byproducts. And so, if you walked in this evening, you'll see there's a brand-new notification regarding the water quality. It says, notice you've exceeded on the quarterly averages. It still has been testing just fine since this whole calendar year, but the averages still are coming out exceeding the levels. So, Massachusetts DEP required the town to come up with a corrective action plan, which had short-term, medium-term, and long-term objectives of how to deal with the water. And the longer-term objective is evaluate other types of solutions, including another well, a different way of treatment, and/or tapping into the Blackstones or the Uxbridges of the world for their water supply. So, that's what the feasibility study was intended to do. But again, it seems premature right now. The challenge is that the water, I would argue, the water quality is, is as good or better than what's in this bottle right now, based on the way it's been treated and tested. That said, the school continues to cover up the bubblers and provide bottled water to the folks here because there is concern that the test results have a lag time to them. And the lag time may be that they feel that, you know, perception is that I don't want to be drinking water that a month ago tested and, you know, and exceeded a certain threshold. So, that's where we're at right now.
How does that impact the kids? Is there, is there still food services?
Yes, there is. There are no, the bubblers are covered and they're being provided bottled water.
Okay, but does the kitchen function? Do the toilets flush?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion in regards to striking Article six? Yes.
Paul, at three eighty-two Chestnut Hill Road. I've been involved with the town stuff since this whole water thing started. We've spent a great deal of money on it. But it seems to me like right now, we're in the preliminary stages of determining the need for a feasibility study, whatever. But what my question is, is if this article is struck today, is that work gonna continue? And can we anticipate seeing a resolution one way or the other on our annual town meeting coming up in May?
Thank you. Peter, would you like to address that?
I can assure you I will continue to address this. I cannot assure you that there will be something at the Springtown meeting.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. So, all those in favor of striking Article six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Article seven, proposed borrowing by Blackstone Millville Regional School District. To see if the town of Millville will approve the one million eight hundred, seven thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars borrowing authorized by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of the Millville Elementary School boiler replacement project located at one twenty-two Barthollet Way, Millville, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project. Which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, and said amount to be expended at the direction of the School Building Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received by the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, fifty-nine point twenty-one percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or, two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided however that any borrowing authorized to the town of Millville hereunder shall be contingent on the passage of a proposition two and a half debt exclusion vote, or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion? Is it moved in the?
We have to amend it, but it has to be moved first.
Well, you can make your motion in, in the words that, which you choose. You can stand up and, I just read it, you are making the motion. Sorry.
But you can't amend the motion, it doesn't exist.
So, you're making the main motion. Your script is the main motion.
So, my word is yours. I wish to change.
You, no, you wish to make a motion and read your motion. I wish to motion.
Jane Reggio, Chairman of the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee. I would choose to motion that the town hereby approves the one million eight hundred, seven thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollar borrowing authorized by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the purposes, purpose of paying costs of the Millville Elementary School Boiler Replacement Project located at one twenty-two Barthollet Way, Millville, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project. Which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended at the discretion of the school committee, and that the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities, provided further that any grant the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, fifty-nine point twenty-one percent of eligible approved projects costs as determined by the MSBA, or, two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that the approval of the district's borrowing by this vote shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt its allocable share of the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes, taxes imposed by MGL fifty-nine, section twenty-one C, Proposition two and a half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
There's been a motion made by Jane Reggio. Is there a second? Seconded by Erin Vanaco. Okay, so Jane, would you like a few minutes to walk us through this, please?
If I may, I would like to just defer to Matt Aronworth, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
So, the Assistant Superintendent is not a registered voter of the town, but obviously has some expertise to this matter. Are there any objections to allowing the Assistant Superintendent to walk us through this? Hearing none? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, everyone. First and foremost, I wanted to clarify what the amendment to that article was. It's very important, that last line that got added includes that the district shall, the, the amount that the district borrows shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. So, essentially, this motion forces the district to reduce the amount that it would borrow by whatever the MSBA is going to provide us, which is an important piece for us to have in this, in this article. For the project, I hope everyone got a handout at the front. If you haven't, maybe you can grab one quickly. So, if you open your, if you open your handout to the first page, page two, you'll be looking at the pipes that run from our oil tank into the building. These pipes are severely decaying. They are pretty scary-looking. The boiler is twenty-eight years old. It is supposedly a double-tank boiler, there's two, there's two encasings. However, every time that the oil company comes to clean it out, they explain to Greenie, our head custodian here, that the walls are getting thinner and thinner and thinner. So, this boiler is twenty-eight years old. The MSBA will reimburse fifty-nine point two-one percent of this entire project. Now, many people say, well, what is the big deal if the boiler goes out in the middle of the winter? We've gotta get emergency services to make sure that the kids can come to school with heat. The bigger concern is the condition of the tank and the piping, because if there's an oil leak in the area, it's gonna impact things dramatically and it will be an EPA disaster. So, that's another, that's another piece aside from just making sure that we actually have heat to run the school with the students. The propane was investigated. There was a number of studies done to determine what would be the best alternative. Propane was chosen because it would, it would give us an approximate forty thousand dollars of savings per year in fuel. And it's also the, the cleanest solution that we have and the most economically feasible for the town. So, if you turn to page four of this handout, what will this cost? To be clear, the entire total project cost would be one point eight million dollars, approximately. That includes project contingencies of a hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven. So, that amount is there just as a contingency, so it may not even get spent. As mentioned before, the MSBA has already informed us that we are qualified for a grant of up to eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars for this project. That means that the total cost to Millville would be between seven hundred and seventy-three thousand and nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And that would be the amount that the district would borrow. The district would not be borrowing one point eight million dollars. We would be borrowing whatever is necessary for the project to get completed. And that could be anywhere between seven seventy-three and nine nineteen. On page five, I've included for everyone, there's an impact to homeowners' analysis. This was done by Unibank Fiscal Advisory, who we would be working with to procure a loan. And you can see that the chart to the left is if we chose to do a ten-year borrowing and the impact per one hundred thousand dollars of the, of household, the tax increase would be on the right side. So, in the first year, per one hundred thousand dollars of assessed home value, it would be thirty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. And that would continually go down as we began paying off the principal of the loan. If we were to go with a fifteen-year option, you can see to the right side that the assess, the extra assessment for, per one hundred thousand dollars per home would be twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents the first year. And then, that again, would continually go down as we paid off the principal of the loan.
Thirty seconds left. Matt, anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, just to clarify on this article as well, what the school committee is asking for needs to go to a ballot vote. So, if this article passes tonight, there would then be a ballot vote on December fourth to allow the school committee to borrow. If this does not pass tonight, there will not be a ballot vote and it will not go forward. Is there any further, is there any discussion on this? Yes, sir?
Larry Pearson, seventeen Granite Circle. Page four says total cost to Millville in those figures. Shouldn't that be total cost to the regional school district and not exclusively to Millville?
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Matt to come up and respond to that. You want to, Jane?
No, no.
Sure. As this is, as this cost is a As this is as this cost is a particular capital expense for this building only, that means that the capital assessment would be applied specifically to Millville.
Thank you.
So does that mean that Blackstone will not be contributing to the cost of this? Or conversely, if a building a building physically in Blackstone in the school, Millville would not have to contribute to?
I'm going to ask the school committee chairman to respond to the regional agreement.
Jane Reggio, again, yes, sir, that is correct. Currently, Blackstone, the AFM JFK School, which is exclusively leased to the district by from the town of Blackstone, has a project through MSBA to replace its boiler and windows paid fully through the townspeople of Blackstone. Millville is the school here owned by the town of Millville, leased to the district, so the townspeople are required here to support whatever capital plans are associated with the Millville Elementary School. If it were in the middle school or high school, and it was a project we were under discussion, it would be split at the percentages currently split in the regional agreement outline.
Thank you. Sir, anybody else who wishes to speak to this article?
Peter Levatic, Central Street. Did we get more than one estimate to do this million-dollar heating project on a fairly new building?
Thank you.
And were we allowed to put that underground plumbing for the oil tank? Is there any kind of warranty, or do we have anything that just do whatever you want in Millville?
I doubt that would be the case, but we'll let the school committee address it, please.
Did we get more than one vote?
Thank you.
So as of right now, this project is going through MSBA as an accelerated repair project, and they have specific guidelines and specific rules that you need to follow in order to participate, in order to get their reimbursement. So at this stage, we've engaged a specific designer and a specific project manager. However, this will go out to bid. So once the design is completed and decisions are made, this will go out to bid for public procurement, so we will get estimates from a number of people that would be willing to do this work. However, this project, what you're seeing here is the estimated project cost. That was developed by the project manager and the architects that were looking at the designs. So that's not to say that we can't get bids that are significantly lower. In fact, at the JFK project that we're doing, we had an estimated project cost, and the bids came in significantly lower, and we did an amendment to lower the project funding agreement.
Thank you.
Could you say something about...
Sir, 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 if you'd like to speak, that's fine, but we need to see if anybody who has not spoken on the article would like to speak first, and I do see several hands. If you guys want to come down, too, you can line up at the microphone and we can, that's fine. Yes, sir.
Mark Sekanowski, 248 Chestnut. This is a new system. It's gas. We have oil. Does this include the removal of the oil tank?
I'm seeing heads nodding, so I'm going to answer, yes, it does. Yes.
And that was Madam Rich Gravelo, 39 Grove Street. Follow on on that question. Does the grant cover the tank removal as well as the boiler replacement? Because at one time, I heard that the grant would not cover the tank removal portion that that expense would be Millville's.
Thank you. I'll let the Assistant Superintendent speak.
So when MSBA puts together the grant amount, they do have certain costs in the project that are non-reimbursable? The I believe we actually, it wasn't supposed to be a reimbursable cost to remove the tank, but I believe, I'm sorry? There's about $15,000 out of $100,000 that it will cost to remove the tank that has been excluded from the grant. So the but however, the total project cost includes the entire removal and replacement. But again, as I said, the MSBA won't reimburse certain portions of the project, and there was $15,000 for the removal that was not given in reimbursement.
So it's not eligible for reimbursement, but it is written into the amount of the article. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Peter DeAngelo, 29 Lincoln Street.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone?
Sure. Peter DeAngelo, 29 Lincoln Street. Two quick questions. Should we also factor in, and this is a project that I would support, the cost savings with the different fuel and the new equipment would then be offset on our overall budget?
Yes. I would assume so that will come into the school committee's budget and, you know, for future years.
Great. Secondly, the estimated life of a new system, is that also been factored in?
Sure. Can anybody from school speak to that?
25 to 30 years.
Thank you. Ken?
Jennifer Gill, 100 Berthalet Way. I guess, so you'll see the capital planning. Can you recommend this 5-0? But I'm speaking just on behalf of myself. So the reason why I wanted to recommend this is because of the savings we're getting at the 59.21% reduction in cost. If we were not to approve this now and something were to happen in the future, we would be responsible for replacing it and responsible for the 1.8 million or whatever the cost is at that time. So the fact that we're able to get this coupon essentially and greatly reduce the burden to us, that's why I personally felt very responsible in recommending this, because it is such a savings to us, and we could be planful with our money and respect everyone's spend.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I'm going to let Adrian speak while you come down, Cindy.
I just, this is for the school committee. I just want to know how many times you've applied for the MSBA reimbursement on this project specifically, and also if you can comment on how many projects were approved this year through MSBA.
I can speak specifically that this is the second time that we applied for this project. To let everyone know, this project was applied by through the school, but at the request of the former town administrator who started the process and the former superintendent of schools. The new superintendent of schools, a new administrator, came into this process once it was approved by MSBA, but we have been denied by MSBA for this program, for programs at the high school. It is a very competitive process and very difficult.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Cindy Walsh, 31 Maureen Way. Just to be clear, if we are designating this building as a shelter, we probably need to have a running heating system?
Thank you.
Natalia Awur, 49 Hill Street. I have two questions, basically. Did we look into an above-ground system? And number two would be that I would think that future repair would be easier and cheaper if it was above-ground, whether it's in the cellar or whatever, as opposed to underground.
Thank you. Does the school want to comment on that?
Yeah, so a year ago, we voted on the or last spring, we voted on the feasibility study. Last spring?
Last special time we knew.
Last, so a year ago.
I wasn't here.
Okay. So a year we go, a year ago, we voted on the feasibility study, and in the feasibility study, the school committee asked very specific questions. Could we take out the oil tank, put the new tank where the oil tank was? Given the ledge that exists around here and given some of the constraints, there are three proposals that are still on the table as this program goes forward, and that's why the variance in the price to the district from or to the town from the $770,000 to $900,000, based on where we end up putting those tanks. But it will be in a, in all likelihood, an above-ground system, because two of the options are for tanks above ground, one closer to the school, one further away from the school. There are a lot of constraints still under consideration, but in all likelihood, it will be an above-ground system.
Thank you. Okay, he's reading. Would anybody else like to speak? Is that a hand, Jerry?
Yes.
Come on down.
Jerry Finn, 47 Grove Street. I'm in full support of this. I want to make it real clear. Jen made a good point, I believe. If this was to, God forbid, break sometime between now and the next annual meeting, we would be on the hook for the entire 1.8 million. Hope you all understand that. This is an insurance policy to make sure that doesn't happen. I don't know about the rest of you, but 28 years, your burners are pretty much done at that time. So you really need to have this take place. You really should consider this very strongly. Also, I want to make a one-on-one notion to you here is that it used to be that the SBA School Building Authority used to give a 73.3% of the total reimbursement. I see some folks here that have been around for a while, understand that. They're now at 59.21%. God only knows what they're going to be next year or the years after. It is a $500 million fund. There is a new law in place that they're trying to increase that fund, but if they don't, I'm not willing to bet the future of this town, based on the fact that these folks may next year say, geez, it's only 50%. So I think it's a it's a good bet, it's one we should take, and I wholeheartedly endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Merkew, 35 Alfonso Way. I just have a quick question.
Right into the microphone, Keith.
Oops, sorry.
It's okay.
So we're looking at borrowing 1.8 with the idea that the MSBA is going to reimburse 59.21%. Is there any chance that the MSBA does not come through and we are still at the 1.8? Not that it doesn't need to be done, because it does. I just want everybody to understand that the financials here only show us on the hook for $900,000.
Thank you. Jane, do you want, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, the school committee has already taken a vote to accept the MSBA grant, and we will ratify that at our meeting Thursday, Thursday, soon, sign? On the 14th, next Thursday. And so essentially, we have already accepted that 59. whatever percent.
Thank you.
Keith Boone, 224 Chestnut Hill Road. Just like to comment, based on what I've heard so far in terms of the financing, it looks like over the course of a 25 to 30-year life at $40,000 a year, basically, we're going to be saving the town somewhere between $1 and $1.2 million. So if you look at what we're investing, somewhere between $770,000 and $920,000, we're actually doing better for the town over the 30-year life for the new heating system. So I'm fully supportive of it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to the article? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to speak that has not spoken yet?
Larry Pearson, 17 Granite Circle. There was dissent, one dissenting vote on the finance committee. I'd like to know what that person's reason was.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, that was that was me. There were a couple of reasons, one being that the article as drafted in the warrant wasn't clear, in my opinion. Specifically, it was amended tonight to be more clear. And then the second reason was just based on, you know, overall capital planning and our request to put together an overall facilities plan for all of our buildings with the school. I felt that, you know, while I do believe that this project is a worthwhile one and one that needs to be done in the short term, for those two reasons, I did not recommend at the finance committee public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this article? Seeing no one, I'm going to call for a vote. Because we are authorizing the district to borrow and not the town, this vote is a majority vote, so we'll use it voice vote, yes or no, not a two-third. So right now, there's a motion and a second to see if the town of Millville will approve the $1,807,687 to allow the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of the Millville Elementary School Boiler Replacement Project. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It is unanimous. Article eight, reimbursement to purchaser of 20 DePrater Street, to see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $183,100 to reimburse the purchaser of the lot identified as 20 DePrater Street from the town due to inability to acquire clean title to lot or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $183,100 from the General Stabilization Fund to reimburse the purchaser of the lot identified as 20 DePrater Street, Millville, Mass.
There's been a motion made by Jennifer Wing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Tom Hul. Jen, would you like to speak to this article?
I'd like to defer this to town council.
Are there any objections to town councils speaking to this article? Hearing none, I will ask Mr. Riley to address this.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't know a lot about the history of this parcel, but my understanding is that the prior owner, I'm not even sure was known at a time, over the years, there've been at least a couple of title searches of it, which conflict with each other. And so the bottom line is that the town, which acquired this by tax title, is not able to give clear title to the individual who bid on it, and that was a condition of bidding a parcel like this. And therefore, since the town's not able to do that, in my opinion, it would not be in the best interest of the town to fight this out in court or anywhere else. I think it makes a lot more sense personally to just reimburse the purchaser and then figure out going forward if there's a way, and there may well be, to to get a clear title in the town's name, and then you could go through the bidding process again. But that's, so that'd be my recommendation, and the Selectman Finance Committee and Capital Committee all voted in favor as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions in relation to this article?
Larry Pearson, 17 Granite Circle. I certainly am opposed to returning this money for several reasons. The person buys a sale at auction at a distressed sale, they should be fully knowledgeable about the risks involved. The town should have no recourse on this and not have to stand behind it. And if you insist on returning the money, do one of two things. At least take the taxes out, that was the purpose of the sale in the first place, and/or defer the sale to the next to the second bidder.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to that, or? No? Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Hi, Jennifer Gill, 100 Berthalet Way. So I think as town council pointed out, one of the conditions of the sale was a clear title. So that is the one thing that Millville promised, is it would be a clean title that they could have to turn over sale to someone else. So it was sold as is. The water could be pure acid and kill you if you drink it, but we promised the title was clear, and the title was not clear for this land. And if we were to continue with this, town council again said this, we're open to a lawsuit. So we could either pay this amount now, or they sue us, and we pay this amount plus whatever else. So, you know, I wish that there was free cash available, we could take this out of some other funding. That would be better for the town, but this is, I just, we promised a clean title, there was no clean title. If we don't return it, they're going to sue us. So I really feel that we need to support this motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Parkin Alley, 28 Alfonso Way. I also want to just reiterate in my own words what she just said. I think if this happened to any one of us, or at least the majority of us here, and a clean title was promised, and I'm believing that that was promised because it was just said in a public forum, and now it's not clear, we owe this to this person. It there's no, it almost shouldn't even be discussion, you just have to, you have to do it because for legal reasons, we have to do this. But at the end of the day...
But at the end of the day, I would ask everybody to put yourself in that person's shoes. You had promised something. We didn't come through on what we promised. We owe them the money back, plain and simple. There shouldn't be any other option.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Paul at 382 Chestnut Hill Road. I am definitely in favor of giving this money back, but I, I think it's very important to note that the reason why this needs to come out of the stabilization account is because right now, the money that was collected for that particular parcel is wrapped up in this coming year's free cash certification. So basically, if we give this $183,000 back, which I'm absolutely in favor of, I think it's important for everybody in this room to remember that when our free cash is certified, and take the money that was put into that free cash number and dump it back into the stabilization account to replenish this money.
Thank you.
Natalia Allwood, 49 Mill Street. If I'm correct, I believe this is the same property that we have offered twice for sale, both times with no clear title. So the town kind of is liable for doing it twice.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Because the funding for this article, $183,100, will be coming from the General Stabilization Fund, it will require a two-thirds majority vote. So all those in favor to see if the town will raise and appropriate $183,100 to reimburse the purchaser of the lot identified as 20 DePrater Street from the town, please raise your pink card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your pink card. It is not unanimous, but it is two-thirds, so the motion carries. Article 9, Town Bylaw Elections. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town Bylaw, Chapter 30, Section 30-1A, Annual Town Elections as follows, or take any action relative thereto. Town Elections. The annual town election, for all purposes except Blackstone-Millville Regional School District Committee Member Elections, shall be held on the first Monday in the month of June of each year. Is there a motion?
I move that the town vote to amend the town bylaws.
Please.
I move that the town vote to amend the town general bylaws, Chapter 30, Section 30-1A, Annual Town Elections, by deleting the current subsection and inserting in its place the new language as printed in the warrant.
So there's a motion been made by Diane Lockwood. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Wing. Diane, would you like a minute to explain this?
There are a couple of reasons that I was supporting this article. One of them being that when we go to the annual town meeting, that's when we talk about the budgets and everything, and if something comes up where we need an override or something put on the ballot, we end up having to have a special election afterwards. I do know that in the past, we've had a couple of special elections prior to annual town meeting, and the people aren't aware of why or what's going on. And I think they'd get the information better at the annual town meeting and then have knowledge of what's going on if we have the election following the annual town meeting. The other reason is that our elections right now are in April, and we always have Board of Selectmen that are up for reelection. And if we end up with a new Selectman coming in, the annual town meeting is right after the election, and they really have to catch up on what's going on and maybe not be aware of some things that they maybe would like to know more about. So if we had the annual town meeting first, then the current Board of Selectmen who are knowledgeable would be there. And then at the annual town election being in June, the new Board of Selectmen could get caught up with everything by the special annual, the special town meeting come November.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. This is just a, I'm sorry, that, Adrian.
And I would agree with the town clerk's logic on this article. The part where I have a, where I have difficulty in accepting this is the fact that if we were to pass this, that means we would have to hold two elections. One for the school committee each year, and one annual town election for the rest of the town officials. So it would be an added cost to the town to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Adrian?
My understanding is that the school committee is responsible for the cost, although it would be passed on to Millville. I'm not sure how it would be reimbursed, but it's not Millville's cost.
Thank you. Diane, would you want to speak to it?
The, if we were to have an election just for the Blackstone-Millville Regional School Committee, I believe that it's correct that probably we would be able to get reimbursed. I'm not certain of that 100%. And yes, there would be a cost, you know, for Millville, because we'd probably split the cost. I'm not, I know that they're working on a new regional agreement, and I'm not certain exactly what's in that regional agreement. And I'm hoping that I can get some help on this.
Thank you. Jane, the school committee chair, would you like to speak to that?
I will do my best. But I, I, I feel as if I need to couch my response in saying that I am supportive of a later election. I am supportive of a later election for school committee members as well, because I think it's very difficult to elect someone in April when you're in the middle of budget season, in the middle of evaluation of a superintendent, and somebody has to come in and have to evaluate a superintendent they've not worked with ever, within a one-month period. So I am in favor of this, but I will tell you, in 1982, the towns of Blackstone and Millville went to the state legislator and got a special law that allows us to have an election every year in April in conjunction with the two towns. And our election, that law, only allows us to have an election in conjunction with the two towns. If the two towns don't have their election on the same day, and so I would encourage people to work with both towns to make one ruling across the district. If it doesn't exist, if the two towns have two separate elections, we either have to go back to the state and ask for something different, or we have to go, according to Massachusetts general law, that says we get elected every other, school committee members get elected every other year, which would change all of the positions on the school committee, because now somebody's elected every year. It would be every other year and held in conjunction with state and federal elections.
Thank you.
So it is a significant change, if it changes for Millville only and not the school committee.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. This just requires a majority vote to pass. So all those in favor of the bylaw elections amend, change, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay!
The nays have it, this fails. Article 10, General Bylaw for Parking Regulation. This is a long one. So the article was printed, and it was distributed to everyone here in attendance tonight. If you need a copy, it is available in the back. So if there are no objections, I will not read through this and just allow a motion to be made. Are there any objections? Hearing none, is there a motion? Can you come to the microphone? Oh, well, you've got her, what are you reading? What are you motioning here?
I move that the town vote to amend the town general bylaws, Chapters 85 and 90, Streets and sidewalks, and vehicles and traffic, respectively, by deleting the current Chapters 85 and 90 and inserting in their place the revised chapters as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. So there's been a motion made by Pam...
Maloney.
Maloney, sorry, I'm interrupting. There's been a motion made by Pam Maloney. Is there a second? Second, was that Brian Malali? Is there, so Pam, at this time, would you like to discuss the article?
I'm going to defer to the town planner.
So the town planner is here. She is a non-resident, but obviously can provide some expertise. Are there any objections to allowing the town planner to speak to this article? Hearing none, the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. Myself along with the planning board, we took a look at the bylaws in general. In 2017, CMRPC took a look at the bylaws. They noted that they were kind of significantly underdeveloped. I'm sorry, I haven't called. And so we kind of started with the parking and on-street parking bylaw. We, over several months, took a look at neighboring communities, what they had for bylaws, Blackstone, Uxbridge, Southborough, and two others. We aggregated those and made some updates to the parking and the streets and sidewalks. There are no real significant changes in terms of what is being required. It's just updating language, making sure that the old language is taken out, and that the articles read more fluently.
Thank you. So provided out back tonight was an updated version compared to the warrant. It was a little bit different. After everybody's had an opportunity to read those, are there any questions or further discussion for this article? Yes?
Ray Berthlet, 51 Berthellet Way. 85-5, Removal of Snow from Sidewalks. Who polices that, and what's the ramifications if you don't do it?
Thank you. Do you have a...?
I'm not entirely certain. Who enforces that? That's actually one of the articles that we didn't change.
So that was an existing article, there's no change to it?
There is no change to it.
Mr. Berthlet.
I'm definitely not in favor of this, because I can't see a senior citizen shoveling 12 inches of wet snow off the sidewalk on the side of their house. That's ridiculous.
So you're, you're speaking to 85-5 still?
Yes.
Okay, the town planner said this is the existing, 85.5 is the existing bylaw. That's not anything new.
So we don't know who polices it, and we don't know what the ramifications are. Is that what you're telling me, ma'am?
The town planner has stated that, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions or discussion? Aubrey?
I guess my question is just, is there anything of substance here that's been changed? Or is it truly language and just modification of, you know, format?
Yeah. I mean, essentially, really, that's, that's what we undertook. There is an update to the parking fines. Those have been increased to kind of meet other communities and what they're charging, and make them more enforceable. But other than that, there, there isn't any significant changes to the intent of any of the sections.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. This is going to just require a majority vote to pass. So all those in favor of updating the general bylaw parking regulations as outlined in the document and moved tonight, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay!
It carries. Article 11, Town Bylaw Personnel. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town Bylaw, Chapter 20, Section 20-8, Compensation System as follows. Section 20-8A shall be amended by adding the following language. "The compensation plan shall comply with applicable provisions of the Commonwealth's minimum wage laws, and in the event of any inconsistency, the minimum wage laws shall govern." Section 20-8D, Classification and Compensation Plan, shall be amended by deleting the columns for the offices of Town Administrator, Town Accountant, Fire Chief, and Police Chief, and inserting in their place the following. Town Accountant, Grade 6 by contract. Town Administrator, Grade 8 by contract. Fire Chief, Grade 5 by contract. Police Chief, by contract. So at this time, I'm actually going to request that we do a division of the question. The moderator has the authority to divide the question without waiting for a motion, if division will serve some constructive or valuable purpose. Based on the public hearings that I've attended, I feel that there is a reason tonight to divide this question and vote the two subsections separately, as they could potentially have different outcomes. So therefore, I'm going to divide the article into the two sections of the bylaw that it pertains to. Section 20-8A, and then we will separately vote on Section 20-8D. So having said that, is there a motion for Section 20-8A?
I move that the town vote to amend the town general bylaws, Chapter 20, Section 20-8, Compensation by adding the language noted for Section 28.8.
I second that motion.
Are you going to read the language now, Jen?
Oh, as printed in the warrant.
Okay.
I'm just sorry, I had to separate on my page.
That's okay, thank you. So there's been a motion made by Jennifer Wing. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Kevin Surratt. Jen, would you like to speak to that bylaw?
So currently, we have actual numbers in there, and as we all know, that the state minimum wage will be changing over the course of the next few years. So instead of coming back every year to say we need to raise that minimum wage number for some of those people who get minimum wage, we just changed the word so that it's always minimum wage, regardless of what the state is doing, that that minimum wage is just there.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion on this bylaw or this motion? This is a majority vote, so all those in favor of updating the town personnel bylaw, Section 20-8A, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay!
The motion carries. So now we'd be looking for a second motion for the bylaw of Section 20-8D.
I move that the town vote to amend the town general bylaws, Chapter 20, Section 20-8...
D.
Classification Compensation Plan, and amending the classification system in Section 20-8.0D as printed in the warrant.
So there's a motion been made by Jennifer Wing. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Kevin Surratt. Jen, would you like to walk us through that?
Sure. Currently, in our Classification Compensation Plan, two, all four of these currently are by contract. Negotiated contracts with the board and those individuals. The Board of Selectmen and those individuals. Two of them currently have numbers as far as salary goes, and two of them do not. It says by contract. So what we're looking to do is have all our contracted people be by contract. That allows the negotiation and the ability to negotiate a contract with those individuals. That being said, each of these items' salary is listed in the town's budget on their line item. Every contract also says, "Subject to approval or appropriation of money." So it still goes, the contract still goes back to the townspeople on the budget line items for their salaries.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Adrian?
Hi, my name's Adrian. I'm a Director of Compensation at a public, publicly traded company, and I just want to say, good practice is to evaluate market compensation on a regular basis as opposed to just putting... as opposed to just putting by contract. So one of the reasons I didn't support this was because I think that the town should go through an analysis of market-based compensation before entering into a contract with anybody.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this?
Yeah, I think, just to be clear, what was just brought up in terms of the folks here, the audience, having the ability to come back at a special town meeting or an annual town meeting to approve the line item of the appropriation, is totally impractical. We're not going to go out and hire someone, subject to appropriation, and then subsequent to that, come into this meeting and have conversations about what they should actually be getting. It could be six months, it could be ten months later. So the current bylaws essentially give the control. Because bylaws require a vote of this body, of this group to change, it gives the controls of those salaries to the folks in this room and not anyone at Town Hall. By making this change, you've essentially given complete discretion to set whatever salary range the Board of Selectmen feel appropriate, and yes, subject to appropriation later on. But it doesn't seem practical, and I can't see any justification for changing it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Again, this is a majority vote, so all those in favor of adopting the new Town Bylaw Personnel, Section twenty-eight D, as outlined in the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
A nays have it, and this portion of the article fails. Article twelve, amend library operating budget. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds the sum of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars to fund the Millville Public Library for the remaining FY two thousand and nineteen, or take any other action in relation thereto, submitted by citizens petition.
I'd like to make a motion. Lynn Foley, twenty-eight Maureen Way, Library Trustee. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds the sum of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents to fund the Millville Free Public Library for the remaining FY two thousand and twenty, or to take any other action in relation thereto, submitted by citizens petition.
And Lynn, can we have a copy of that? And Lynn, for the record, we've been asked, can you please tell us where the funding for this would be coming from?
From, what is it called? Sorry. General stabilization.
From the General Stabilization Fund. So there's been a motion made on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, can I just have your name?
Neil Foley, twenty-eight Maureen Way.
Thank you, Neil Foley. The original motion was Lynn Foley. So at this point, Lynn, you have five minutes on the floor to discuss the article.
Okay, I won't use it all, hopefully. This citizens petition was signed by approximately one hundred and forty residents who want a fully funded and certified library. In order to do that, we have to be open fifteen and a half hours a week and pay the salaries of our librarian and assistant librarians. We need to purchase certain dollar amount on books, DVDs, et cetera, all of the materials for the FY two thousand and twenty. Oh, I'm sorry, for the FY two thousand and twenty, it should be approximately seven thousand dollars. Thus far, we've only spent six hundred dollars, and that's from the Friends of the Millville Library, thankfully. We should be able to pay for the electricity, oil, maintenance, alarm system, pest control, telecommunications, and other operating costs for a town building with a town-funded operating budget. These expenses total fourteen thousand, three hundred, thirty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Again, we've only been budgeted eleven thousand, two hundred total from the town. We do need to pay for the CW Mars membership, which catalogs all the books and materials in our library and in every library in the state. With certification, we get state aid grants that keep this cost under two thousand dollars. But because we're not certified, we don't get those grants, and it costs us closer to thirty-five hundred dollars this year. So salaries, building operational costs, book budgets, and funding from the town are what will help us to be recertified. We're only asking for an additional twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents to meet those needs. That's less than one-half of one percent of the total town budget. And here's what we'll get for that money. We'll get access to every library in the state. We can get over fifty-nine million items delivered right to our library from libraries across the state. We gain access to millions of dollars in library construction grants. We're able to apply for state and federal grants. We get discounts through grants for small libraries on our CW Mars membership costs. We allow our BMR and BVT Millville students to do just like their peers in other communities and get to access every library in the state. We level the playing field for all members of our community who might not have a job, a smartphone, a computer, an internet service, a printer, extra spending cash to buy books, and all this other stuff that the library offers for free. One of the biggest complaints that I heard from citizens who signed this petition was that they were upset they couldn't go to the library closer to their work or where they grew up or wherever, the library of their choosing. Parents have complained that their children, as opposed to Blackstone, have only the small amount of materials available at Millville Library. Millville homeschool parents in particular are upset by this. We, the trustees and our librarian, don't like the fact that we can't apply for any state and federal grants. That plus the fact that we've been paying salaries and building costs out of our library grant funds, we are quickly depleting those funds and are not able to replace them without certification. So please, consider allowing the library to be recertified and vote in favor of our citizens petition.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to this article?
So Jennifer Gill, one hundred Berthlet Way. So you can see the Capital Planning Committee did not recommend this article. There was one positive vote, and that was from Peter. So the general discussion there was, well, we already voted on this at the town meeting not to fund this. So I think it's really unfair to all the people who came in May. Is that when the town meeting was, maybe? Okay, thank you. And said, no, I just don't think we can afford this at this time. Let's look at this for another year. And so that's really unfair to all of them. Pulling from stabilization is how we get into trouble financially. When we use that to cover our operating budget, that's where we run into issues. And as I've stated, we're working on a plan, so anything that we take out of this takes away from our ability to use that money in a more planful manner, really examine and put some financial rigor behind our spending.
Thank you.
Keith Boone, two-two-four Chestnut Hill Road. So from my perspective, I find it very challenging that this town does not have a library. It impacts me professionally, living in this town, because it means that I can't go to any other library that I might use or this town's library to do the kind of research that I might want to do. I live and work in Millville, and I can't use any library in the Massachusetts area, in the region that's close to where I would be, to be able to check a book out, to be able to have a book come to the Millville Library. So I find that extraordinarily frustrating. My children, who live here and who pay, you know, taxes and everything else, also cannot. And that's very challenging for them, both in trying to do their schoolwork. The Millville Library provides internet access for anybody, any town resident, actually, any patron who wants to come in and be able to use the internet. So you can just go in and go use the Wi-Fi. You can go in, you can use the computers for people who don't have access to computers at home or who can't afford them. There are programs for children, there are programs for adults, there are programs for seniors that happen all throughout the week. I know, because my wife does a lot of those programs and puts them on at the library. So I think there's a lot of services that we get and take for granted. If you look at what the library did over Halloween in terms of putting on a haunted house for the children of the town, you know, we served over, what, over a hundred, probably closer to two hundred people coming through the haunted house in the library. We wouldn't be able to do that next year without the library continuing. So I'm in strong support of trying to actually open our library and get it recertified.
Thank you. We're going to let the residents speak first.
I am Dave Maloney, eighteen, Megan Way. I have two school-aged children who use the library regularly. They can't take books out of other town libraries. They can't do the research at home as they could do at the library. If the Millville Library is certified, take the books out. Millville's a traditional New England town. Traditional New England towns tend to have several things. Town common, check. Town elected officials, check. Public library. If we can't provide one-third of those basic building blocks of the town, it kind of sounds like we've given up. Twenty-four thousand dollars out of my pocket is a lot. Twenty-four thousand dollars out of everybody's pocket, that's pennies in a week, pennies. We're bickering over pennies. It seems silly.
Thank you.
Michelle Murray, thirty-seven, Allen Court. I just wanted to say that, yeah, we already did vote on this. I know this is a real sensitive issue, this is real tough, and we are voting over pennies, but they're important pennies. It's why we're here, to make these difficult decisions. And I just want to also just clarify, not to add fuel to anyone's fire or misfortune of this, but you can not take books out, that is true. But you, I go to Blackstone all the time and use the internet and look at anything I want. It's not the same, not trying to argue that. But it is, you aren't deprived of internet, it's a few miles down the road, and it's a nice library.
Thank you. Are there any other residents who wish to speak at this time? Jen?
I'd just like to ask the town administrator why he voted for it.
The town administrator?
On the capital planning.
Okay. Did you want to speak to that, Peter?
Sure, yeah. So by your bylaws, I am actually a voting member of the Capital Planning Committee. And so all the arguments that you're hearing are all valid and good ones. Why did I vote for it? I'd say there's a few reasons. One, yes, the capital planning weighed in on this because it is asking for money out of the stabilization fund. We'd be having a different conversation if we knew what the free cash was. We're close, but we're not there yet. But we know that there's going to be a good slug of that. So arguably, the motion would have been looking for funding from free cash on this. It is less than half a percent of your budget. And I, what really struck me, though, is along the same lines of the argument of using stabilization funds, which are, in essence, your savings accounts, the savings accounts of the Friends of the Library is what's funding the salaries of each of the individuals who are all very capable. And so were they not doing that, you'd have no library whatsoever. You'd have no hours there, I think. But the last thing, one of the things that, from my perspective, that I hope I can help your town with in the long run is to help you all get greater market value. Millville becomes a more attractive town for people to want to move in here. And I think having the library and the setup you have it currently is probably not helping your market values. So those are the four reasons why I voted for this, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the librarian, Colleen, has asked to speak. She's a non-resident voter. Are there any objections? No, Colleen?
Hi, I'm Colleen. Can you hear me okay, everybody? I'm Colleen Anderson. I'm the library director. I live in Smithfield, Rhode Island, so I'm not a resident. But I have to say, even though the town did vote prior to this, on this issue, I'm not sure they fully understood the implications of the vote because we had a number, we've had a number of people come in really complaining, very upset that they can't use the collection in Blackstone or they can't use the collection in Uxbridge. And I just want to be very clear that, you know, you might be able to visit those libraries. You're not going to be able to check anything out. You're not going to be able to check any children's books out. The parents with small children are big library users, and they won't be able to do that at Uxbridge. They won't be able to do that at Blackstone. We won't be pulling our weight, we're not pulling our weight right now, actually, in the network, which consists of one hundred and fifty libraries who cooperatively send us any book we want, really. It's a very minimal cost. When you look at surrounding towns, right now, we're paying about three dollars and fifty cents per individual in Millville to support the library and its collection. And we are, really, the librarian, the trustees, and the people that work at the library are maintaining that building, which is in a very critical spot in Millville. So we're the ones that are getting the building painted. You know, we're the ones that take care of the interior of the building. You're still going to have a building to take care of if you don't have a library in it. So for all of those reasons, I'd really encourage you. I think the return on the small money you put in, even if you bumped our budget up to forty to forty-four thousand, which would be the maximum ever that the Millville has had for a library budget, the return on that is so large, really. I can't tell you the number of materials you can draw on, the libraries that you can use. It's really such a minimal, minimal amount compared to the return on the amount that you put in. So if we fully funded the library, let's say forty to forty-four thousand, the town is still only paying about ten fifty per person to do that. So I have to say, any questions? Does anybody want to ask me any questions as a librarian?
Thank you. Did you want to speak, Erin?
Erin Bonacco, Albert Drive. Just maybe a point of clarity as well, but I'm wondering if the vote would have been any different from our boards if we had our free cash available. Our free cash has not been available for two years, and I think the library has been impacted greatly by that. So I'm just curious, if we weren't talking about stabilization and had the six hundred thousand that could possibly be available or certified soon, would we be in this same predicament towards the library?
Thank you. Does Finance Committee want to ask?
So on behalf of the Finance Committee, and then anyone can feel free to add in anything else, but the Finance Committee did vote against this article, zero to five to recommend. And there were a few different reasons why we stated that we voted against this. The first being that, as has been said, this issue was discussed and voted upon at the annual town meeting. At the annual town meeting, we were looking at a big picture with a lot of different pieces. So I would say there were many departments that came away from town meeting, maybe not thrilled with the way things went, but the voters in that, in those seats at that time, were looking at the big picture and kind of where we stand overall, and they were making some very difficult decisions. So one of the challenges of looking at an article like this in isolation is it seems very small when we talk about it, just this one, you know, library article, and what's the big deal? It's not that much, you know, coming from our savings, you know, why not support it? But from a Finance Committee perspective, knowing that at annual town meeting, those voters were looking at a full list of things and making some very difficult decisions on what was to stay and what was not to stay, not forever, but for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, we opted to support that. The second thing is, one of our policies amongst the Finance Committee is not to use one-time funds to fund our operations. So pulling from either stabilization or free cash is using one-time funds to fund our operations that's not sustainable long-term. So whether or not free cash would be available right now, I don't believe that would change the Finance Committee's perspective on this. But what I will say is, we made it very clear at annual town meeting that we are looking forward to this coming budget cycle with more players on board, more committees on board, and more feedback to try to make some potentially different decisions across the board.
Thank you. Does anybody else on the Finance Committee want to speak to that? Maggie, did you want to ask?
I'm Meg Boone. I live at two-two-four Chestnut Hill Road, and I'm an assistant librarian. I don't make a minimum wage. I don't work normal hours. I love the library. I love the community interaction. I love the level of thought that it takes to put into having kids show up for Easter egg hunts. I think that a library is something that's important for any town that wants to call itself a town. And I understand that the people at general meeting, the last meeting, made a lot of really hard decisions, and I honor them. I didn't even show up. I'm guilty. I don't make it to every one. But at the same time, it's a town meeting because we have the chance to come back and say, no, this didn't work so well for us, let's try to do something different. And I think that's what happened. I think it was a bad choice, and I think that we need to do something different, and that supporting our library is important. that supporting our library is important. And other than crying at you guys, I'm going to walk away. Thank you.
Thanks, Meg. Would anybody else like to speak? Hang on, Lynn. We're going to let everybody speak once.
Tim Foley, Maureen White. I'd just like to point out that somebody mentioned earlier that they go to the Blackstone Library. Now, I wonder why that is. Probably because there's more resources there.
It's a pretty big building.
It's a pretty new build and everything, all things considered. The town of Blackstone, per resident, funds over four times as much as what the library's asking for. They fund approximately fifty-four dollars per person per year. And what you're asking for here is a little over ten dollars per person per year, just to fund the library. And speaking to the Finance Committee's point that a lot of people were cut at annual town meeting, which we're probably all here for, it's true. Yet I think if they had all been impacted as hard or as much as the library was, I think they would be here today. I think they would have petitioned the town, the townspeople, for signatures to come here. It's obvious to me that the library was impacted more than most. And I think a lot of people, as was mentioned earlier as well, didn't quite understand the whole CW Mars thing, the whole certified library. I don't think people understood that until they went to a library and tried to borrow a book and then were told no. And at that point, the light went on. So this is just revisiting it and trying to get it back into the lines of the town can have a library. The children, the people who can't afford it, everyone should be able to go there.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak to this?
One question.
Yes, Andrew.
If this article were to pass, would we be able to recertify this fiscal year?
Lynn, would you like to speak to that?
Yes. I have been in contact with the State Library Commissioner, Mary Rose Quinn, her name is, and she has assured me that she will, if, so we've been granted an extension, so we have to get, if this is approved, we need to get the article stamped or whatever, send it off to her by Friday, and then she will rush it through, and yes, we will be certified in December if all goes well. Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, Pam?
Pam Nico Badish, forty-three Central Street, Millville. I'm talking just as a citizen. I don't happen to have children of my own living with me. However, I do get involved a lot with children and the seniors in town, and I do firmly believe in opening up this library fully, giving them what they need and getting certification so that we can use books and resources like every other town. We don't have much in this town, but we do have some fantastic families, excuse me, families in this town, and I think everybody should have that opportunity. I know it's taking money from one hand and giving it to the other, but this is what we're all about. It's small pickings. I know it sounds like a lot of money, but it really is small pickings when it comes to our children and our elderly in this town. The elderly use the books there, too, and they love it. They have a lot of things going on at that library, and everybody benefits. I'm for it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to the article? Adrian?
I have children and I like the library as well, but I just want to remind people, we have not been able to balance our budget, and we used sixty-seven thousand dollars at our annual town meeting that we did not have in revenues to fund other items. And so now we're looking at almost a hundred thousand. We're going to continue to put ourselves in this situation if we're using free cash or capital, general stabilization, whatever stabilization, in order to fund operating costs.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak to it? Lynn? Lynn, come on down, sir. Go ahead, Lynn.
A hundred and forty citizens of Millville signed the petition saying that they feel that this is an important issue. They feel that this is an emergency. This is important. This is what they want. So our library grant funds, they're, you know, they're getting a lot lower, and we are not able to put, you know, replace that money at all, so.
Thank you.
Peter D'Angelo, twenty-nine Lincoln Street. Obviously, finances and the emotional response to what our library should be. I would have a question and then an observation. If we do not ratify or certify, when will we? And then how does that impact the rest of the community for many, many years to come? I would also ask, I didn't grow up in Millville, I didn't grow up in Massachusetts, but how many of us, growing up, made use of a library and was the better for it?
Thank you.
Paul in Alley twenty-eight, funds away. I'd like to stop by saying, and I am truly in belief that at some point in time, it would be wonderful if this library could be opened back up, and I truly mean that. And I think there's a lot of people here that aren't for it right now, feel the same way as I do. However, what concerns me, I've been living in this town for seventeen years, and there has been a lot of fiscal, for lack of better terms, it hasn't always been run to the level that it's being run right now because of these two incredible boards that we have going for us. I've seen a lot of changes happening in the last year, and they're positive changes, but these things don't happen overnight. Having said that, we're going to be taking from a one-time stabilization fund, and we don't know if we can do that again next time. Instead of being fiscally irresponsible and taking from this one time to try to keep it going for nine months, let's wait and try to revisit it at the next town meeting and truly try to get this through, try to get it on our budget and not keep taking from one time, because we're going to find ourselves right back in the same hole that we found ourselves, which we finally started to dig ourselves out of. And I don't think that's smart, and I truly apologize for the, you know, the people that are so heartfelt about opening it, and I get it. The other side of this is I don't see this as an emergency. This is a special town meeting for important topics. This is not an emergency. It should have been reserved for the special town meeting. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? One second, Lynn.
Natalia Oliver, forty-nine Hill Street. I think we, at town meeting, people spoke, and I second what this gentleman said. So the next time we should address it would be at a town meeting. And if we made a commitment to look at our finances, sort it all out, then we owe it to the Finance Committee to let them do that and then vote on it and bring back what we can and wait on the rest. But town meeting would be the place that I would say we should do it, and we should listen to the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Is there any other resident who has not spoken on this before we? Jen, sure?
Our bylaws allow citizens petition, a citizen's petition for annual town meeting requires ten signatures. Citizens petition for special town meeting requires a hundred signatures, and for the exact reasons you're all saying. So if the group went out and got their signatures, they have a right to be on this. You may not agree with it, but they have a right to have their citizen's petition at town meeting for the reasons that they want to support their cause.
Absolutely, and I think we're doing due process. I mean, we're going through the exact same way, so absolutely. Meg, did you want to speak again?
Yes.
Sure.
Again, Meg Boone, two-two-four Chestnut Hill Road. I think Lynn might be ready to answer this, but I was addressing the issue of it's not an emergency. We did point out that by Friday, which is how many days away? Four days away? If we can get paperwork, then we can be part of the library, trustees can get us re, and re-whatever, certified, thank you, can get us recertified, and that lets us apply for grants so that we can support ourselves. We do a lot of granting. We do a lot of fundraising. We do a lot of things to make the library work. And it's not like we're going to ask this one time and then ask some more the next time and then ask them more the next time. We're saying, please, give us the opportunity to work at supporting ourselves, to get those grants that are available through the Mass Library System and through the state friends of. And we recently got a grant from the Massachusetts Friends of the Library because we had some creative people working hard to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn, did you want to speak again?
I just want to say again that a hundred and forty, near to a hundred and forty people signed this citizen's petition. It was only necessary to get a hundred. There's that many people in this town that feel that this is very, very important. We have been decertified for a year and a half, two years, I think it's been. You know, we just need, we need to keep the library certified. It just offers so many benefits to everybody in town. It levels that playing field for, you know, a lot of us here could take our smartphones and order a book on it. There are people in town who don't have jobs, let alone spending cash for that kind of stuff. So, you know, we just want to give everybody the opportunity to get books from any library throughout the state.
Thank you.
And respectfully, I'd like to address the issue of the last town meeting. I think this town meeting was very well-publicized, so if there were people who were adamantly against, you know, the amount that we're asking for, I mean, they had plenty of notice to show up and make their voice be heard. So I, you know, I don't think asking for it again is really an issue. I also want to make the point that Massachusetts is very supportive of small libraries. We have four thousand dollars worth of equipment in the library that allows us to be part of a network. Because when we're certified, they will reimburse us two thousand dollars for that. Because we weren't certified, we had to pay nearly the full four thousand dollars. So there's a Small Libraries and Network grant that is very, very helpful to small libraries if they pull their weight and, you know, pay their part into the network.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, Paul?
Sorry. Paul in Alley three-eighty-two, Chestnut Hill Road. I just want to mention something. I've actually gone before the Library Board of Commissioners twice, once in 2011 and once more recently when we lost our certification this time. The purpose of that meeting, from our perspective, was to ask for a waiver, a waiver against losing the certification. They do grant those if your budget has been reduced by twenty percent, twenty-five percent. The first time around, our budget was reduced by seventy percent, and the second time around, it was ninety-six percent, or whatever it turned out to be. One of the commissioners said something very poignant in this most recent time, and what they said was, we are very supportive of the small libraries. We want to see you get your certification. The best thing we can do for you is not grant you the waiver, because then all the people in town can see what they're losing if they lose their certification. And I think that's important to note because I believe that's what happened here. It was lost at the annual town meeting. Since the annual town meeting, a hundred and forty people, which by the way is more than the population at most town meetings, by the way, if they were all here, we wouldn't be having this discussion, and a hundred and forty people said, wait a second, whoa, you're right, we made the mistake, and, you know, we need to remedy this situation. And they signed that petition to put it before everybody here today.
Thank you.
Some people in Millville can't afford the taxes. So when are we going to stop spending money? Let's end this right now.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who could possibly have anything else to say? All right, we're going to call for a vote. So because the funding for this...
Point of order?
Yes.
I'd like to call for a secret ballot.
So there's a motion made to call for a secret ballot. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Meg Boone. We'll give it to Meg. So a motion for a secret ballot made by Lynn Foley, seconded by Meg Boone. Are there seven residents who will stand and support? One, two, three, more than seven. So at this time, I'm going to ask the town clerk and the counters to prepare for a secret ballot. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Diana, the town clerk. She'll go through the procedures for the secret ballot, please. Okay, so this is what we're going to do. This box is for your vote. If you vote yes, you put the yes in here, you throw the no in there, in the trash, in the trash can, right there. I guess I have to stand back here so I don't get any feedback. So your vote goes in that box right there. If you're afraid that somebody might see, just fold it in half so everybody can see, pop it in there, throw the other one in the trash. We have Pat and Carol Anne and David down here. Bring your pink card with you, and because this is the last article, hand the pink card and you get a green ballot. Okay? How's that sound? Okay, so why don't we start over here and over here? You guys come down and then we'll leave the center for later. Come down, get a, hand in your pink card and get a green ballot. We didn't use this earlier, so we're using it now. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Diane, the town clerk. She'll go through the procedures for the secret ballot, please. If you vote yes, you put the yes in here, you throw the no in there, in the trash, in I guess I have to stand back here so I don't get any feedback. If you're afraid that somebody might see, just fold it in half so we can see, pop it in there, throw the other one in the trash. We have Pat and Carol Ann and David down here. Bring your pink card with you, and because the, this is the last article, hand the pink card and you get a green ballot. Okay? Okay, so, why don't we start over here and over here? You guys come down, and then we'll leave the center for later. Come down, get a, hand in your pink card and get a green ballot. We didn't use this earlier, so we're using it now. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Diane, the town clerk. She'll go through the procedures for the secret ballot, please. If you vote yes, you put the yes in here, you throw the no in there, in the trash, in I guess I have to stand back here so I don't get any feedback. So your vote goes in that box right there. If you're afraid that somebody might see, just fold it in half so we can see, pop it in there, throw the other one in the trash. We have Pat and Carol Ann and David down here. Bring your pink card with you, and because the, this is the last article, hand the pink